All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hello, everyone.
So this is the call to order for the board meeting for today's Thursday, May 19, 2022. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Yes. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first.
Roll, yep, first these roll.
Mr. Malter, Ms. Curry here, Mr. Whitmore.
Here.
Mr. Boss.
Here.
Mr. Prey, Mr. Mount, Mr. Ranger.
Here.
Mr. Bowery.
Present.
And Mr. Whiteford.
Here.
Okay. This is approval of the agenda. Do we have a, is there questions on the agenda? Discussion on the agenda items or at this point?
We did, we did add a couple items. The grants that came in late Tuesday, those are on your current agenda. But it wasn't the first agenda that went out.
Okay. Okay, then we just have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. On favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. There is nothing else, we approve the agenda. Now the approval of the meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions? Find any punctuation there or certain things?
We did go back and correct the ones that. Thank you. Sure, that's all.
Okay, then hearing of that, we'll, let's have a, get a motion to approve the meeting minutes. I'm approving the minutes. Second, I'll, so, let's have a vote. On favor of the approval of the meeting minutes for April 21st.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Now we're down to our action items. So approval of the fee simple property purchased with Whakers, take the LLC, 5.56 acre, uninclosed parcel located at 6935 Tyco Road, the amount of 513, 53803 at Space Coast Regional.
All right, so if you recall, 90 days ago, we did receive word concurrence to move forward with due diligence on the parcel basically across the street. We did hire a consultant to do a phase one environmental assessment, which could conclude there was no evidence of any environmental issues. We hired a appraiser that substantiated the price of the $525,000 for the 5.56 acres. And that's what they paid in 2006. You know, the comps were in line and they were, you know, ready airport and I found them to be reasonable. Courtney Noble's maker in way here, but she found them reasonable as well. This basically allows us to develop the property, make sure it's compatible with airport operations. Now, there's been a big to do on that concrete recycling plant that's going in right at Golden Knights Road. This actually has the same zoning M2, so basically, you know, that, that could be the same problem for us. The city's been kind enough to work with us on setbacks and making sure that it's somewhat compatible. But we now have a, a real good opportunity to purchase this property, put it under our control, we can develop it. We have a current tenant that's interested in it now, so we can put this thing to work. We're gonna, we are gonna have to make some improvements to it eventually. We really need to get the internet over there, not only for that parcel, but the, what we call the corner building where Space Perspective is at. Right now, they're beaming the internet across the street and it is horrible over there. But we also need to get that parcel on sanitary sewer as well. So we are gonna have some improvements over time. This property was identified in 2005 master plan, it's eligible for reimbursement. So we need to get it, assuming we're gonna approve it tonight, we'll get it in the work program. So in a few years, we'll get 98% of that back. So we're recommending approval, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
How, how serious is this potential? Right here.
It's Space Perspective, they're very interested in continuing to kind of the campus here. They're working with a development group already and they, you know, it's never a deal until it's a deal. But we did put a conceptual drawing in practice, just so you can see what it looks like. Once it is developed, you know, we're looking at $50,000 to $60,000 back in, you know, non-aerodynamic development. So it's really a win-win. I'll make a motion that we move forward with purchase of 6935.
Okay, we have a motion approved, it's stated. Second in discussion, I wanted to ask, so it seems to me like a part of this is defensive as well as optimistic, you know, what we can do. And if I understand correctly, we're not using the grant money. So if down the road and wanted to, we had a, pay us twice with any board or we could, we wouldn't have any problem with that, by selling it to any other entity since we purchased it.
Well, as long as we don't take a grant for it, but you know, the idea is if you look at the east side of the airport, there is not that much property that's available. So the idea is to purchase it and play the long game with a, you know, long, long-term lease agreement and develop it.
Right. We're paying what the guy paid for it and when 2000?
2006. They paid the same amount. Again, I think it's.
Hundred grand an acre? We put a hotel and a restaurant on there?
Talk offline. That's for the Space Perspective complex at the campus that they're very excited about.
Right into it. I think, you know, truly the fact that someone could come in and just make it a junkyard of their own or something, I think it's.
It's, it's M2 zoning, so it's heavy industrial. Yep, that's right at our front door. Right. We've got enough problems with appearance over the years, we need to move forward and away from that stigma. Yeah, this is, this is a great opportunity for us and it would be a missed opportunity. Cause I think we're gonna, we're gonna buy this property either way eventually, so why not buy it now when it's unimproved? We don't have to deal with the business being on there or a junkyard being on there and we have the funds available to do it now.
Can I ask for clarification? Are we spending 513 here, we're splitting that with Whitehurst, I wasn't clear on that.
So it's 525 is their asking price. We already, in order to get a contract and do our due diligence, we had to put some money down. So the 513 number is what we need to close on. But the actual price, price is 525, which is the 95.
We're buying it from Whitehurst?
Yes.
Anybody, we don't need to be zooming in right? Two, four, five, zero, no. The other, okay, well, we have a motion, second, I'm gonna say, let's vote on the approval. As presented, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, approval of the aeronautical ground lease agreements with Riverfly in.
No, it's one.
Riverfly in LLC.
I didn't want to be that guy.
Property located Merritt Island. Go ahead, tell us about that.
Brad would correct me, that's, that's true, it is. I'm glad I was correct to do it. So Dr. Niyazi, who's an established developer in Brevard County, he's former airport authority board member. He wishes to construct a multi-tenant hangar facility for small aircraft. Conceptually, he's looking at two nested box hangers with four units in each building. He's looking at $1.5 million as improvements. If you look in the packet under exhibit A, you can kind of see the conceptual site plan there. As part of the project, the authority will need to design and construct a small taxi lane for Dr. Niyazi to actually access the facility and do some drainage improvements to on the east side, which we would tie into future development that's currently under environmental assessment further to the east. So it would be a kind of a common use taxi lane, so it wouldn't just be for him. This is one of our standard ground lease agreements drafted by this guy, Mr. Whiteford. This is a small development, a little over an acre. The terms of the agreement are 30 years plus two additional 10-year terms. The base rent is our standard 12% of fair market value. Because it is kind of a small parcel, probably looking at around $20,000 a year in, in rent. The rent increases will be based off of CPI results annually. And then the rents will commence once the developer either receives their certificate of occupancy, occupancy for 12 months, whichever comes first. This is a great project, assuming that this gets approved, right now, they're gonna start. So Dr. Niyazi is very anxious to move forward and I think it's, it'll look great on the south side of the airport. And it helps kind of break up the airport itself, because you know, when Dr. Byers was, you know, did our strategic business plan, one of his recommendations is we enter into more ground lease agreements and kind of breaking up or diversifying our revenue. So Dr. Niyazi is a kind of a proven entity in Brevard County and I highly recommend that we move forward with ground lease. All right, question? Yes, sir. Site plan, I just haven't heard, I'm getting oriented, where exactly on the airport this is going? You mentioned south side, so it's the south side, two flies right here, what looks like a box cutout. We call it the construction laydown yard, that's essentially where it's gonna be, just north of the fire station.
Have you been to one of those EA meetings, Brad?
No, I haven't.
It's across the street.
So I've driven by there though, so yeah, okay, that.
Gives us some orientation. Presently, there's nothing there with exceptions to asphalt, right? Partial asphalt, partial.
I think there might be a small little building on that parcel, all that'll be improved. And I think as far as project two, we need to do something with the, the south side roadway entrances, they are absolutely terrible. So we'll look at doing something with that.
Do you know if these hangers have restrooms in them?
I think he's gonna, he's gonna have to probably put one, one restroom in the buildings, yeah. He's gonna, I mean, he's gonna do whatever the code dictates. Will these be available to anyone or are these people that are only leaseholders that? Well, that's up to him, you know, he's a private developer, so however, however he wants to market and how he wants to do his occupancies, it's up to him. So I suspect it'll have something to do with the Riverfly and condo across the way there. Hangers at such premium there.
Sure. I ran through a couple of things that caught my eye, this is, this is new information, they're talking about fuel flowage and based on consumed fuel. Can you expound on that a little, just so I'll learn something?
I, I think that was put in there if they, if they decide to do some sort of fueling facility.
So that'd be fuel sold, not fuel used.
Yeah, whatever basically goes into the tank, that's how the fuel flows.
Okay.
But again, that's if he decides he wants to do some sort of fueling facility and with probably the small development.
And possibility of landing fees for some operations, not intended, but what kind of operation generate a landing fee for him?
I, I think that's just common standard within the agreement.
Okay.
We're not, we don't control, right, the kind of traffic that goes in and out of, over a 50-year period of time. So to the extent that, that he ever generates traffic, if he generates any fees, probably have to capture those, that's all that is. It's too common a future use.
Okay, thank you. So I think turning a piece of asphalt and dirt into a $20,000 a year revenue for the airport authority, making nice new buildings at the airport, I think the fact that he probably, most likely wants to tie it into his condo sales, we should get some vibrant, active aircraft owners, because if you're gonna buy kind of an airport where you're not gonna be advised that that's not in parks that never uses it, you know, while it rots away kind of thing, so I think it's a movement, I think it's a, it could be a little nice number for the airport. Okay, let's, motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the lease agreement for Riverfly and 518. Hey, we have a motion, we have a second.
Do you want me to hand it out?
No, good.
We're good?
And we have a second by Mr. Ross, but let's have a look. All those in favor of approval of the aeronautical ground lease agreement, Riverfly and LLC for the property right on the airport.
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing opposed, unanimous, so that one passes too. Sounds like a right one, we're gonna be out here.
654.
Okay, so item number three, it says approval of land of award for landscaping bid at 355 Golden Knights Boulevard with Riverside Landscaping Company, the amount of 61, 735, 39. That's out. Justin's gonna tell you.
For the record, just to mention, Deputy Director of Operations and Facilities, see if this technology works here. But where's the clock? No clock. We're fancy now.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Oh, by the way, the online looks good.
Okay, yeah, we're getting there. What was done? This is all brand new, something that board members gave us encouragement to move forward with. So one of Kevin's first things when we got here is we said the landscaping's look horrible here. Part of the admin building, which I think we're gonna coin it a different name now that we're moving out of it. I'm gonna call it the east terminal building. So we hired a landscape architect, they've gone through, she's worked on this for quite some time. We solicited bids for what she designed, there'll be a lot of reuse of the existing palm trees up front. And then there's a ton more plants, grass, mulch. We are currently working through the irrigation right now, the irrigation should be ready in the next week or so. And then once he does approve this, once we get through with that, then they'll come back and set the irrigation to how the plan is designed. So we, we got three bids. Riverside Landscape was the lowest, $61,735. And Robinson's doing the irrigation right now, just for trying to give a better look to the, to this building, the side of the airport.
Have experience with Riverside?
We do not. But Susan Hall, our, our landscape architect does. She's worked with them, along with the other two as well for years. She had nothing but good things to say about Riverside.
Houston Robinson's doing the irrigation now?
Yes.
Is there a well or?
Yeah, we've had a well here for, for years. The well actually controls the irrigation for this building, the fire station for up at the corner by the T11 hangers. It's a, it's a big well.
Who's gonna cut all the grass? Is it still gonna be solely?
Yeah, it's still gonna be us cutting the grass, yeah.
Well, right now, they're cutting weeds. You have a question, please? Say, I'm familiar with Susan Hall and she's very, very well respected. She's, you can get hers, is a landscape designer. I was on her waiting list for about two years.
She does a lot of work for the Merritt Island redevelopment agency, so that's how we got one of them. Yeah, she's, she's been a pleasure to work with.
She used to do some, she's totally out of residential now, I'm just doing commercial, but truly, she's a class act, truly. So I'd say the fact that she recommended those, that's, that's great.
Yeah, the idea is when you're coming over Golden Knights, you're coming into the hill there and this building has a lot of features to it. They get blocked by the trees that are currently right up against it, so she can move those back. I kind of open it up a little bit and be able to, or modern and classy facility.
That's the camp piece, right?
Right.
Okay, no, any other discussion? I agree with motion to approve. I'll state it. Okay, we have a motion, a second, let's take a vote on the approval of the award landscaping bid for a good buy. Amount 61, 735, 39. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion passes, 4-0.
Thank you.
Item number four is the approval of amendment number one, PTGA 438, 494-20CT at Space Coast Regional.
Right, so this was the original siting study grant for the new air traffic control tower. I think you all saw in our volume monthly report that they were trying to put together funds to, so that we can move forward with the design and permitting of the new facility. So they have done that, you all should have got it a couple days ago or a day ago. FDOT is increasing their participation in this grant by $640,000 for the design. Our local match will be 160,000. We're finalizing the scope work with Abcon and we'll get started here in a couple months. We recommend approval.
Questions? Everyone, it's pretty easy. I'll make a motion to approve. There's a motion to approve, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. So let's take a vote, all those in favor of approval of that amendment number one? Item number four, stand. None opposed. So that motion passes. Next one is item number five, approval of PTGA sponsor for 35, 310-2-94-1.
Nasi at Merritt Island Airport. This is the infamous northern area security infrastructure project, we're calling this phase two. As we went through the original permitting, the county requested that we put in additional lift station and some additional infrastructure to complete the project. FDOT, who's probably more tired of this project than we are. They were kind enough to offer additional funding in amount of $110,000. And we'll have a local match of $27,500 for a project total of 137, 137, $500 to complete the project. We are recommending approval.
And I'm sorry, what is the nature of the project?
The Nasi project started 10 years ago, maybe. Basically, it's to put in additional security fencing, it's get everyone off septic, on sanitary sewer lift stations. It's just been dragging over the years, but we're finally kind of getting over the hurdle. Justin will give you an update on the project here in a second. But as the county has wanted some additional line items, the state has stepped in and offered additional funding.
Basically, infrastructure.
Yes.
Couple observations, on the site plan, they tagged that road running along as some road drive.
I believe you're talking about manor.
Manor drive, yeah. That's something to be corrected, and also, there's a number of bad links. Pages nine, 10, 11, and 37, but if you click on them, you're gonna, 204s are gonna be anything at all.
Okay.
It's nice to see this finally moving in some direction.
We're getting there. We're getting there.
Brad, thanks for the keen eye, as usual.
Still don't have cable, Kevin. I'll give you my password.
No, they're actually cracked down.
The record.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on that? So we could, could use a motion of approval or denial of item number five.
We'll make that motion. And under prior.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and we have a second, so let's take a vote for the approval of the PTGA to sponsor 435, 310-2-94-1 Nasi at Merritt Island Airport. All those in favors, say aye. No votes, that passes unanimously, and we're down to number six, approval of invoices for projects.
Back again. We have four invoices being submitted to FDOT, all of them are from Abcon. The first one is for the AWAS replacement at Arthur Dunn for $2,779.97. The next one is for the AWAS replacement in Merritt Island for the same, for $2,745.27. And then the third one is for the site selection and study for the replacement of the air traffic control tower here. It's case goes for $10,390.54. And the last is for the fuel farm relocation and design project for $7,911.13. These are all similar to you. Correct.
Any questions? There's AWAS's up the range.
No, it's a long way. It'll be a little update, but yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second approved, so we'll take a vote for the approval of the voices for the projects. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we made it through that. He's now ready for Deputy Director of Operations Maintenance Report.
Can I ask that we add an action before we move on, or is that not appropriate? It was simple, it was simple to get a, you and I talked about this, Kevin, just to sum total of vacant acreage that we would have here at Merritt.
Oh yeah, I did send you that, except that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
To that email?
Yeah.
I'll check. All right, I'll check. All right, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'll verify.
So we will call that an action.
Nope.
But yeah, let, let me know if you didn't get it.
Sure enough. Sorry.
And it's just, let's hear your report. All right, project update. All right. Legacy projects, currently runway 97 here at Space Coast. It opened today, runway is complete, the temporary striping is in place and 30 days will come to determine the striping, so there's no reflectivity on the markings right now. But everything's back up and running, it's, it has one plane used it so far since the start of this meeting. So what's the length? 5,000 feet. So the shoulders have been removed. It's nice and smooth, there's no more, Al can probably attest to the speed bumps on it, they're dropped, so it's. They're dropping, so it's, it is nice. A great contractor on this, speak very highly of him. Yeah, he did a nice job, it's all cleaned up. A little rain will help the sod out, but so.
I was impressed that they were able to finish for a show after they had that.
The, uh, hangar 52 demo here at Space Coast, um, we have a scheduled meeting with the contractor to try to work out a few issues and I close that out hopefully, uh, here this month. Could, could you expand on those issues a little bit, just out of curiosity? Um, there was, uh, the contractor finished and the, the week that he finished, there was a huge rainstorm that washed out, um, a lot of the project. Uh, so there's, there's still a few, um, drainage issues that need to be addressed. The, uh, VAC apron and techy lane down, um, on the east side, the porches have, uh, all been removed. Um, they are doing demo right now, today I noticed that a lot of the trees are gone, um, they're, uh, moving along now finally on the VAC ramp. Uh, we'll, great, there's not too much to update on this. So there's a meeting, yeah, next week, um, we have a meeting with, uh, Michael Baker and the Term Pipe Authority in KB Home to try to work out this limited access right away easement. It's been kind of stalemate, um, I think we now have kind of the right players in the room, so, um, hopefully we'll have a, a good meeting and a good update. You know, path forward, because it's been stale for a while. The corporate hangar Merritt Island. The plan is, uh, the county requests we, uh, re-revised the plans and we resubmitted, uh, it's supposed to be this week.
Where, uh, where on the airport was that going?
Right next to the current hangar, um, which is on the north side, sorry, yeah. Yeah, it's on the north side, um, just to the west of the beacon. Just to the west, okay, and then, and just to the west of the, uh, the entrance on the north side.
Okay, are you familiar with my biplane hangar? Yeah, and then the north side, and then there's a helicopter hangar, there's a bunch of grass in between, it's gonna be there.
Okay. Uh, the EA is still ongoing around, there's nothing new to report on that. The, uh, Nasi project has started, um, they have started turning out ponds, uh, there's been a tremendous amount of materials, uh, delivered. A lot of structures are, uh, have been dropped off, so we are finally moving on that. Uh, there is some coordination with, you know, the, our, that it's ongoing. Uh, new projects, uh, the AWAS replacement at Arthur Dunn, we're still waiting on the FAA for the airspace study, same with Merritt Island. Uh, no change on that. Uh, site selection for the tower, uh, we had a meeting last week.
Last Friday.
Last Friday, um, just like a, uh, we had a tower manager there, uh, we verified with the FAA, they had a big Zoom call. They had 3D goggles or Oculus goggles, and so we went through the three different sites and they just verified that the sites would work. Um, we narrowed it down, I should cut one site, so now we're going to two sites. And then there'll be a meeting at the, uh, end of this month with the FAA again to finally narrow down the final choice.
What are the two, the two sites?
So the two sites are, uh, currently right behind the existing tower and then, uh, uh, at the, uh, on the west front. Power marker, yeah, whether the power marker was or is.
So there's a reward.
Yeah.
That's where your list comes from. I know, there's no chance.
And then the, um, the third site which got, um, thrown out was down by where our maintenance hangers, our maintenance facilities, uh, I think the preferred site's gonna be site one, so one A, that's.
That's all, and that's gonna include parking, like there's parking over there's two.
If, if that site gets picked, yeah, you know, we still have a couple more steps to go through. We're almost there. Uh, the fuel farm relocation here at Space Coast, uh, I believe we're starting geotech this month on that. Uh, that is in front of the existing towers where the preferred site for the, for the new fuel farm. And, uh, we're still working on a new signage for the airport, uh, we'll have something, uh, here next week. The next item was, uh, the airshow. Yeah, the airshow is, uh, moving along, the BFC, we moved all their planes out of the hangers, uh, yesterday. The, uh, airshow promoter has set up parking, set up tents, it's been going on all day. And yesterday and the day before, and, uh, we've been moving along, uh, the F-22 was here today, uh, doing some low passes. The F-18s arrive, uh, in about an hour. And the A-10s are coming tomorrow, uh, the rest of the performers are trickling in tomorrow. Uh, we're just, whole amount of weather, uh, practices tomorrow from around 1:00, and then the airshow is Saturday and Sunday. 11:33. Yeah. We'll see, weather doesn't look too great, but.
Great to the aviation. Are they, is it estimated advanced sales, like any numbers?
Um, they haven't given numbers, but they, they, they're, yeah, they're, they're saying low, other, the weather is there. They're big, uh.
But it's going on rain or shine?
Uh, I think, we're gonna hope for shine, so, yeah, I don't know, rain and, uh.
Looking at that.
Yeah.
You mentioned sod with the runway project, is that sod is close, it's not gonna have, we're not gonna have spectators or.
No, no, that's all. Correct, outside of the airshow. Crowd area.
Is there a backup plan in case it does rain and we decide?
They would just cancel. Yeah, I mean, everybody's scheduled to be in it at that time, so, and a lot of the performers have other, other events.
Yeah, they go follow show to show.
Yes, it's, it's pretty much a one, one shot. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so next would be item H, Deputy Director of Finance Administration.
Hey, for the record, Christine Knorr, Deputy Director of Finance and Administration. Um, this evening I wanted to give an update on our accounting software because I'm not sure how many board members are aware of what we currently use. What we currently use is the Stage 50 Cloud Access Program. And, um, we have been looking, and Mr. Mount was assisting us in looking at different programs that surround, it's getting time. But since then, we have had to make a drastic move because we've had serious issues with the Stage 50. It has been, um, crashing on us almost daily, and so we've lost considerable amount of time. So that's another reason why we couldn't present financial statements this evening. So, um, we did further research in, uh, cost and all of that. It's seems to be the best option to go with QuickBooks Enterprise, um, and it will be the construction management program. Um, it will help out with our current projects that we have so that we can track them year over year. And, um, we are looking to move towards that as soon as we get the program in. So we'll start, start implementing it, um, officially, we hope to be able to transfer all data as of 10/1 start on it. But we will try and hear some of the other information prior to that. So upon recommendation of the, um, audit, we were to immediately, or as fast as we could possibly do so, collapse all the companies. But we have not been able to do that considering the software situation that we're in currently. So we'll, you know, continue the way that we are for the remainder of the year, which is working with five companies, and then they will be all collapsed into one. Do you all have any questions about that?
It's disappointing.
Yeah, it is, it's disappointing that, um, it's really kind of been a nuisance and very.
It's been beyond a nuisance. And it just started up rapidly, the, well, issues, or has it just been slow?
It's been a slow, slow grind, but it's, it's really, it's.
It's ramped up now, and we actually, in calling there almost daily now, we actually had a representative state that they're moving away from the program. They're no longer offering it, and they're looking to move to offer a different platform for those that are.
How does the QuickBooks compare cost-wise?
Um, cost-wise, I had Dr. Byers, he did a comparison for us, and, um, and he can expand on it if he would like, but it's considerably, I did not bring it, I can get it for you. But it's considerably less expensive than the Stage 300 is what we were looking at.
It is true.
And we would have to, really with Stage 300, go out for R P, for R Q. So, um, due to the expense. But I know the one program, um, that we're looking to use with QuickBooks Enterprise, I think if you went with a subscription, it was only 27, 2800 a year.
We did a five-year, uh, benefit cost, and QuickBooks is almost five to one, and there were some features included in the QuickBooks package that would be extras for the other programs, so. So we did the calculation just to show, this is a five-year per seat cost, uh, because you have to buy at least two or three seats so people can work on simultaneously.
How about getting the data from the old system?
That's the secret, but we were talking about the chart of accounts and how to organize your, uh, each airport. That's all the other things.
We would like to enhance, yeah, the charter accounts currently, because we feel like it's very inhibited working with it, working with it for the budget and just the different locations, we're actually breaking them down a bit further, just from, you know, the three airports are also doing the fire station, as well as airport storage. The nice thing about QuickBooks 2 is it comes packaged with reports already written, so it's almost a, what you, you know, again, the need to play. So to speak, whereas, you know, other programs where we're having to look at report writer and having to build reports on our own. And that, we do not have the capacity to do that with the situation now. The other thing too, um, QuickBooks has payroll, so that's something that we can look into utilizing their payroll program. So it's automatically integrated into the software rather than using it as part of it, so we'll step stuff further down the road once we get.
I think the payroll is pretty competitive with the third, or you.
Right. Makes life easier.
Chrissy might mention too, there's local people that are familiar with the program, they're actually professionally registered with the company to provide, uh, training.
It's, um, actually, she is, or she is, um, helped, I have a CPA firm that was playing the docs and now it's car racing. A broom could happen to be our auditors, but she's retired, but she worked there for many years in the business client development section. And she's a QuickBooks pro advisor, I've been trying to research it as well and see which programs are the best, and they obviously have done a lot of research as well in the past, being helping all different kinds of clients, and most of the time everyone sells QuickBooks.
Good luck with that. Good choice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think so.
We, we've used QuickBooks for years and further into it, you get the more advantages the state payroll experience.
It's a known commodity, yeah.
I've used it in the past as well, it's very easy friendly.
Okay, great, and then you said we don't have a check, are you sure?
There was a check.
Actually, I did, and I already asked it, it's an answer, so thank you.
I'd like to know why this white bird, who are these guys, this is crazy. These are like a cash back 2%.
No, no, okay, no. Zero hesitation.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, actually, can I ask a question, what would, yes, what would we pay mid-fast urgent care centers for? Drug testing, and then we also, they also do physicals, so our, our personnel. Thank you, you're welcome.
Speaking of physicals. For our ongoing discussions. Do you want to say it on the, on the two of another tenant?
Oh, Dr. Flynn is calling, um, afterwards, um, we're sure. After the last board meeting, I guess, I think it's maybe a week or so, um, he just turned in his keys, it's kind of, I know there was a, um, there was a move amongst the tenants to pay his fees, I, I don't, I don't know where that went, but it's kind of.
He's opening up another roof, some, some insurance. If he's halfway between them and you're, then it might be, yeah.
He's, he's a good asset, and it's good to have, A and B like him.
Yeah, we, we were just in a terrible situation or position, I should say, with that whole thing.
I understand, he understands.
Okay, so our, uh, item number, I, ongoing discussions.
There's nothing in there, but, um, in talking to the chairman, um, last night, he wants us to start looking at, um, some of the subleasing issues going on at Merritt Island, I guess, um, he's gotten wind of, there's like second and third tier level subletting going on. Um, he was not impressed, um, so he wants us to kind of take a dive into it and, um, find out what's going on and come up with an action plan. Um, we talked with our attorney, um, we're gonna look at, uh, developing new lease agreements that have, um, tighter stipulations in them. Uh, more teeth to them, um, sure that we have, uh, proper insurance, so this will be an ongoing, um, I, I guess I didn't realize how bad it was, uh, so that was kind of news to me. That'll be on our ongoing list for a while. Yeah.
It's just the way that, you know, it's been so long that people almost feel like it's their right. Told somebody they couldn't, so they'd be like, my dad's a, but he's hanging in his hair.
That's crazy. Well, we have information that some of the subleases are for more than we're being paid.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure they're making money.
And they're not all there, not a glider, I would say.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get a handle on it, um, but it's probably gonna be, uh, not pretty.
So leases for a T hangar down there, are they, they're, um, annual or, you know, what's?
No, the, the lease agreements, as I read them today, they're up to one.
So we could implement a new lease anytime we want.
Hmm, yeah, it's time.
It is time.
So we'll, um, the chairman wants that as a priority, and I, I don't disagree with them, so we will charge for it.
Great. Okay, so that's it for ongoing discussions, anything else? All right, then time for the attorney's report.
So, as far as item number one there, um, still don't have anything, got no contact, uh, from the, uh, Board of Commission on Ethics. In fact, I'm looking at their, uh, they issue quarterly reports of at least the opinions that they, the complaints that they resolved. Um, they don't give you the resolution, but you can at least see it, I don't see ours anywhere, and I went back through the first three quarters, so, uh, rather last three quarters of 2021, still don't see it. So it doesn't appear it's been yet resolved, uh, by the Commission on Ethics. And so, um, I guess we've been entertaining motions to move that, postpone it to the next meeting, so if you want to go ahead with our usual postpone, we can do that.
Yeah, so if anybody likes to make a motion to postpone that item matter, uh, to the next meeting.
Thank you.
A will you is the key.
You're the motion guy. Brad, is your second?
I'll second it.
Second, okay, all those in favor? None of those, so we have now, print a motion to postpone the next meeting for that.
The only other two things I have are, uh, Welsh Construction Litigation, as I mentioned during our last meeting, is scheduled to begin 10-day trial on June 13th. Very likely that will go forward, um, we took, um, after receiving the documentation, took. We took after receiving the documentation, took the principal of Welsh constructions deposition all day yesterday. Kevin attended as well. Yeah, well. Learned a lot, but so I don't know that we really when I heard anything new as far as evidence, I thought we already knew the landscape of the litigation. I think it's unfortunate to dispute over contract interpretation issue. That's going to end up being decided by the judge. By and large, that's a oversimplification. So that will go forward beginning on June 13. And then finally, just for informational purposes, I attended the airports council international North America legal affairs committee conference in Tucson, Arizona, the first week of May. So if anybody has any questions on hot topics for airport lawyers, I know that we did all have that. Including program delivery updates. Actually, I thought were interesting. I'm happy to report further, but was always entertaining. And one of the benefits is I get to renew my relationships and make new ones with airport lawyers from all over the country. You know, large hub airports, I mean, you have LAX folks there. You've got, you know, really Miami, we have good relationships with the lawyers from the Miami International. So it's good resources. If something happens, I usually will go to them if there's something else. I don't have to bring them. So it's always good to do that. So between learning and relationship networking is a good. In Tucson.
Yeah, what were your law school or what were your best friends?
There were two golf courses. I don't know. There were two golf courses at the.
Yeah. Trivia night.
A restaurant's been tough. Yeah, I did. But no, no, it was it was good. I learned a lot. There's always very, very informative meetings. So happy to answer any questions on any of that.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Appreciate that. So next is the authority members reports. Anybody have anything to report?
Yeah, a little bit. How's it going with the Merritt Island operations for community noise payment and safe flight practices, et cetera? Um, Justin, you can reiterate, but I think the noise complaints, knock on wood. The noise dives have died down. We are waiting to get our noise payment ready back together. When the AWAs are, which right now we can't record a message. We want to try some right hand traffic patterns. But the AWAS isn't a feature of working right now. So when that's back up online, we're going to recompete and start over, not start over again, but start with that. It's been very quiet. I mean, I don't.
We wore them down.
No, it's, you know, it's.
I think it has its flows.
Yeah. I was talking to Mr. Collins, he's got some good ideas. I think we're going to give it a shot to continue on with this.
I'd like to encourage continuing with it. I've started paying a little more attention to traffic. Cocoa Village is on the extended center line to the east runway over there. And paying a little attention, I noticed some aircraft way below illegal altitude. And by the time my flight radar 24 comes up. I've had a single engine aircraft, not over the river, but over the village proper at under 400 feet and maintaining that altitude. Really? Just a few white with blue tails. And recently, like last week, last last week, I had one that I've never had before. And I heard somebody executing a go around over my house. And I looked up and there was a light one. Something over there. Senegal. Didn't catch which maybe. That was, if he was 300 feet, I'd be surprised. He was right there and sound was advancing prop lever in power and starting a climb. And I'm like, that is so far off of acceptable over a residential area. That's two miles away from the airport. That's not okay. So there's somebody needs to get talked to about tightened up.
If you just let me know the dates and times, if you just, I can look all that up and then I can go to the school, the school plane and not not say all school plane, but right, it's school plane. And they take that serious. They really do.
Okay, that's good enough. I'll start seeing if I can. Problem is by the time I get the phone out of the pocket, open it up, get get flight radar and it starts picking up transponders.
No time.
Okay, I'll know the time.
The bird tower.
You know. Sorry, we have the bird tower. We can track it. Okay, the the other side of that is frequently the people that are not playing the game do not have the transponder running for apparently because fly radar is not picking them up. So I'll put it all together and keep your posts. Either I've become more aware of something happening on an increasing basis, but not. So we were having those meetings and I know we said we were going to wait for the AWAs to do try a left hand pattern. Is that right? But are we, is there any reason that not we're just going to postpone the meetings until we resume that or?
I think they weren't comfortable, right? Yeah, it's the the entry into the downward, it's supposed to patch right. And there were some issues with that. So we had talked this today. Suggest that we go ahead and just post the voluntary noise abatement procedure we have in place now, kind of just spread that out a little bit further and see if we can push that a little bit more.
What about the the smart idea of extending the overrun to the west to allow for takeoffs? Is that gotten any traction at all?
No, not really. I mean, I didn't shut down, but is anybody? No, I think it's that'll be a long term solution. But right now we're looking for kind of that quick fix, if you will.
Yes, you do have that noise analysis supplement in the master's plan.
Yeah, so they're going to. So that's that's unlikely this, you know, this weekend. Yeah. But yeah, definitely.
Any other members in the meeting, of course? No. All right, but then that would leave public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, Don.
Good evening, Don White with EA. I just want to let you know, we had actually two Young Eagle events. One at the end of of April. And the other one just this past weekend, the first one in April was a major one at Merritt Island. We flew 71 kids, about half of them were first timers. It was a fantastic event. I talked to the chief pilots over at Two Five. They had no issues whatsoever. So we're all getting along there. So that's good. And then the this past weekend, we had a small Young Eagles event at the VAC for the VAC STEM kids and the CIP kids over at Titusville. And we flew 14 kids with four planes. And so it was a really great event and both times. And our next one is going to be, we're going to skip the summer. We're going to go to October 22nd for our next Young Eagle event.
Okay, well, that's great to hear about the relationship you guys are building with the instructors over there because I know that was a pretty heated situation. So you had happy to hear you said that it's working out. It's getting better.
Yep, absolutely. We let we let them know when we do a Young Eagles event and they're just trying to eliminate the amount of pattern work that occurs on in that morning. And so it's working out real good.
Great. Thanks, Don. Any any other public comments? All right, then the meeting will be adjourned.